The time is 6:02, we're gonna call this meeting to order, I'm sorry, 6:01. Alderman Moyer?
I'm over here tonight. Yes, Your Honor, I have a, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker at the committee of the whole and city council meetings of March 16, 2021.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Here.
Schoonmaker?
Here.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. So, we're gonna begin this evening with some appointments and oaths of office for the fire department.
And I will read through those, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
First, we have an oath of office for promotional appointment of Lieutenant James Van Warren to the rank of captain effective March 18, 2021.
I, James Van Warren.
I, James Van Warren.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of captain. Oh, sorry. You go ahead.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of cap.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution, state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of captain.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of captain.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. I'm gonna get a key one, and I just...
Twenty-seven.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to take a picture with him?
I would.
Here?
Your Honor, next we have oath of office for promotional appointment of engineer Marco Leoni to the rank of lieutenant effective March 19, 2021.
Would you raise your hand if you wish. I, Marco Leoni.
I, Marco Leoni.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
For the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you so much, please.
Okay.
For their family picture.
For their family, right?
If you guys wanna take your masks off for your family picture, you're both here.
Oh, I got some family.
Ready? You take two.
The next oath of office is for the appointment of firefighter/paramedic Corey Hustin to the rank of engineer effective March 20, 2021.
Would you raise your hand? I, Corey Hustin.
I, Corey Hustin.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of engineer.
Have been duly appointed to the rank of engineer.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of engineer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of engineer.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Next, we have the oath of office for probationary appointment of Gonzalo Martinez to the rank of firefighter/paramedic effective March 15, 2021.
Would you raise your hand? I, Gonzalo Martinez. Having been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. And thank you. We have you in the audience.
Our final oath this evening is for probationary appointment of Roman, excuse me, Roman Visentin to the rank of firefighter/paramedic effective March 15, 2021.
Would you raise your hand? I, Roman Visentin.
I, Roman Visentin.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
I have duly been appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions on the agenda this evening? We do have a couple of changes. Item six on the committee of the whole agenda and items 11 and 12 on the council agenda have been postponed until a later date. Any other questions? We'll move on to the agenda items then. First item, implementation of the compliance engine by Bryser. Mitch Cunningham, our fire marshal, will be presenting, and the chief.
Just to continue the fire department theme for this evening, I apologize, Alderman Williams. We stand before you this evening to seek approval to implement the compliance engine by Bryser. This will allow the Moline Fire Department to streamline business inspections, ensure fire protection systems are compliant, thereby improving the safety for the whole community. Not only does this cloud-based technology facilitate the efficient review, tracking, and follow-up process with business owners to correct deficiencies and maintain fire protection systems, it has the added benefit of providing an on-scene incident commander with critical fire protection system information on their mobile data terminal. Mitch Fire Marshal Cunningham is gonna take over from here. He's got a few slides, three, I believe, to kinda illustrate what that benefit will be to the incident commander.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Did I have those first slides? So Bryser is a pretty simple technology. Like chief said, it's a web-based program hosted through Amazon Web Service. It's developed by firefighters for firefighters. And quite simply, it requires licensed Illinois contractors that can service sprinkler, fire protection systems. It gives them a portal and access to essentially upload their inspection data that they do on a yearly basis, whether it's fire alarm system, fire sprinkler system, et cetera. Currently, the existing ordinance requires a digital format to be submitted, but we don't have a technology to receive and access that, that data. So the compliance engine will, will kinda bridge that gap for us. It's a free-of-charge program, and how they make their money and they, they make a living is they, licensed contractors pay a portal fee to access this. So every inspection they do, they pay one lump sum. Our surrounding communities have already adapted it, so they're very familiar with this. And one they say it does is it guarantees and ensures Moline that licensed contractors are providing this work. So this is an example up here. It shows our incident commander in his, in his captain's vehicle. He can pull up on scene at his fingertips. He can hit premise. He can find out the emergency contact information for the building. He can find if all the fire protection systems are up to date. It's very user-friendly. Like I said, it's designed for firemen. It will drastically improve our safety, and it also ultimately, we think, will reduce alarms, false alarms. So this is an example of what the district, what our commander will see when he pulls up the, the program. It gives him an aerial map of the incident. If there's a deficiency within that building, it's indicated by a red flag. If there's no deficiencies within the building, it'll be illustrated by a blue shield, telling the incident commander instantly that this building's fire sprinklers, alarms, and all fire protection systems in the structure have been maintained. Down below, they give a, basically a synopsis of what deficiencies are found and the history of, of the building's services. Additionally, when our fire inspectors go out on a yearly basis and conduct their annual inspections of these businesses, they'll have this at their fingertips as well, from either their computer or cell phone. Along with this, it'll give our administration some very powerful analytics that we can pass along to you as far as number of compliances, number of deficiencies, and what's coming up in the future. This is a quick overview. To the upper right-hand corner there is an aerial map. This is Donner Grove. It's a very similar-sized community, so we, we captured that for their data. And it shows along the corridor there the number of blue shields you can see illustrated and the number of red kinda mixed in. Up in the upper left is when they started with the compliance engine. They only had 11% of businesses compliant, which is, which is pretty shocking. A lot of businesses don't know. So what the Bryser program will do is they actually do the calling. They send out the, the letters of deficiencies for us on our behalf, free of charge. They send out over 10,000 letters a week to businesses, and they monitor over a million systems currently. That's pretty, pretty much the down-and-dirty of, of what Bryser is. Do you guys have any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? I think it's great technology. I'm very excited about it. Anything that helps, you know, streamline that part of, the paperwork part of your job, I think is a wonderful, wonderful thing. So thank you for bringing it to our community.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you. Next item will be presented by Dirk Price. It is the amendment to chapter 11, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Test and Inspection, Inspection Records.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So, new people, new ideas, and Fire Marshal Cunningham wasn't done. He took upon himself to look at our code. That's where he discovered that we required the submission of records we can't use and handle, and came up with the fix, but also to tweak the code in terms of the reports we get. The code has updated language that the Fire Marshal and the fire code doesn't recognize or use, and so between the two of us, we came up with a tweak. One of the questions from the proposed language that Fire Marshal Cunningham was keen to get an answer to was, is this gonna worry our businesses that we're now asking for 10 times the number of reports at 10 times the expense? And he surveyed some other communities that use the language we're proposing here, which is an NFPA standard language, and nobody's had any issues. And so, we recommend approval of this tweak to our fire code and to the 2012 International Fire Code.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you. The next item is also presented by Dirk. It's the amendment to chapter 20, Motor Vehicle and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Snow Routes.
So, I thought we were done with snow, and, but we're not. And the same is true of the work we're doing to nail down the improvements we made in snow removal services and the lessons learned from this past snow season. And I wanna thank Brandon Pennell, who's just been critical to this. So the last piece of the puzzle was correcting the snow routes. You'll recall that we had streets out there where, have a snow route sign on them that weren't in the ordinance. We have streets in the ordinance that designated it snow routes that didn't have signs on them. And then we had others that we thought were snow routes that were neither in the ordinance nor signed, and were already no parking. So, Brandon got into the weeds with me, and we came up with a new list, a refined list. It wasn't just taking the old and adding. We went through it block by block, and to Brandon's ever-living credit, he did it with Todd Green using mapping. And so we have both a visual map for the citizens, the residents to see, in addition to having to put it into lawyer language in this list. The, the continuing improvement went on even through today. Shout out to Alderman Went. He came up with one area we all missed by the high school, so we're adding 26th Avenue to the list of snow routes. It's 26th Avenue on both sides between 34th and 48th. So moving it forward will be amended in that version to add that, that piece that Alderman Went and Brandon and I worked through. And again, thanks to both of them. And with that, I recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion? Alderman Potter?
Yeah, I emailed Brandon about 11th Avenue B between 25th and 27th Street. That's an area where the, the bus comes up 25th Street and heads west on 11th Avenue B, or east, I mean. Well, east and west, 'cause it goes both ways. But anyways, it's one small segment of 11th Avenue B that I've noticed has seen some problems with regard to snow coming out into the lane, making it very difficult for passage. Wonder if we could, between now and next week, decide if that's one we need to add to the list.
All right, we'll look at that. And if we make the amendment, I'll let council know, and it'll be on the, the first reading. To be, to be clear, 11th Avenue B between 25th and 27th.
Correct.
Any other items, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
26th and 27th, got it.
25th and 27th.
Oh, 25th? I guess I didn't have it. Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Dirk. The next item is amendment to chapter three, Advertising and Signs of Moline Code of Ordinances. Private Property. Chris Mathias will be presenting.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Great. So, council had some goals for the planning commission in 2020, and there were seven different items to check out. One of those was the sign code, a review of the sign code and possible tweaks to it. We had David Silverman with Ansel Glink review the content, the content neutrality of the code, and then he did a separate review, a more broad review of, of just how the code regulates different types of signs, and, you know, if we needed any changes to it, that type of thing. We presented that to the planning commission and had a kind of a broader look at the sign code and just talked about some various things. I mean, the tweaks you have before you today are some clarifications to what a temporary sign is. And part of this process for me was really nailing down, like I said, what a, what a banner is, what a temporary sign is, should they need permits, things like that. So, we decided to keep a signed permit for a banner, that requirement, even though it's a very rare thing that somebody would get a permit for a, for a banner. We've kept a temporary sign as a no permit. I believe there's a typo there. It should say NP in, in the code where it says SNP, that S wasn't removed. So, and we've made some tweaks to the sizes of those temporary signs to allow for real estate signs, commercial real estate signs, as well as various temporary signs in a residential area, which might be a, you know, a contractor puts a sign out in a residential area for work that was actually done at the property, things like that. So, we're asking for your approval. The plan, the planning commission recommends approval, and we're recommending to concur with them on these changes.
Motion approved. Parker?
Second.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. And just for clarification, I wanna make sure that we're making that, this change with that typo being corrected. I just wanna make sure that we, we've got that in the record. The, the second thing I wanted to touch base on, I, I wanna thank Chris and the planning commission and Ansel Glink for, for reviewing this. This has been an issue that has been going on for, for a few years. I, I've emailed back and forth with Chris Mathias about it. Under former leadership staff, we have had some, some issues in the enforcement of, of some of these things. At the time, it had been communicated that there were some issues with our, our code. It's now come to, to my attention and through Chris's communication that the real issue was not necessarily the, the code, it was an enforcement issue. And so, what I'd like to do, and, and first, as, as we go through this, congratulations on, on your new promotion job over at Scott County. You're gonna do a great job filling in for Tim Huey. But before you leave, I would love for you to leave a memo for whoever steps into your shoes here on how you envision this enforcement working with this code, to be proactive and, and make this work. So, that's what I'd like to add to this. Thank you very much for you guys looking at this and, and cleaning up the mess.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Next item is item number five. This will also be presented by Chris. It's the 2021 zoning map.
Yeah, so I have gone through the zoning map, added some annexations that have happened over the last couple of years, added the most recent rezonings to the map. And we, what's attached to your agenda there is a very reduced size of the official wall map, which is a 36 by 44-inch large wall map. So, those, those labels are a little large, and we, we didn't have a way to remove those. But we do have a very nice wall map that'll be, if you choose to approve this, will be the official zoning map for the city, and we'll get one in the city clerk's office and also have one down the planning department. And of course, it'll be on our website. So we'd ask for your approval of the official zoning map for 2021.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, and could I have that second again? Alderman Potter? Is there any discussion? Alderman Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Chris, for, for doing this, and, and thanks for Dirk, for catching. This is something that should have been done every single year, and I think this may be the first year that it's been done since I've been on council. It's required by state, state law, state statute that we publish this and adopt it every single year. It's something that, that hasn't been happening. It just, I guess, was overlooked for a number of years. So thank you for, for catching that and keeping it. So thank you for catching that and keeping us in compliance with state law.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. We will be skipping item six tonight. Item seven is Hiring and Promotion. Fleet and Facilities Coordinator Sarah Mark will be present. Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah Mark, the Fleet and Facilities Manager, will be presenting the Fleet and Facilities Coordinator position. Go get him, Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Staff is coming to you tonight to request an exception to the hiring moratorium to fill the Fleet and Facilities Coordinator position. This position is responsible for all administrative support functions for the Fleet and Facilities Manager, Division Accounting, Budget Development Assistance, High Level, Data Collection, Management and Analysis, and Documentation and Administrative Oversight of the City's Central Fueling Facility, to name a few. This position is extremely important to both the Fleet and Facilities Divisions, and staff is recommending approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Sarah, just real quick, I know that one of the things you had mentioned was, in your memo, was the Fire Marshal Record Management. Will this, with what we just passed earlier, will that affect this role and how or what they need to do with the Fire Department and the Fire Marshal?
I haven't actually spoken with the Fire Marshal here at the city, but what we do in Fleet is on the state level, and it's for the requirements for the underground storage tanks, as well as any boilers that we've got in city buildings, and then also keeping records for the elevator maintenance and certificates of occupancy. So I would assume that there is some kind of a crossover, and I would be happy to get in touch with the Fire Marshal here at the city and see if that, if there's any kind of, I guess, overlap that we might be able to eliminate.
Yeah, that'd be great, if there's some efficiencies that will help your guy or gal be more efficient.
Absolutely.
For everybody. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Sorry about that. Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Sarah. Then, oh, the next item is presented by Sarah as well. It's the Phelps Rental Services Agreement.
Thank you again. For over a year, the city has been utilizing Phelps' uniform to provide our uniform and rug services. They were given a single-year contract to be reevaluate, excuse me, reevaluated at the culmination. Phelps has done an outstanding job, has never shorted our inventory, has been quick to address uniform issues, has been extremely responsive when changes have been needed, and provided excellent customer service throughout the duration of the contract. Phelps did provide staff with a three- and five-year contract for consideration that were reviewed by corporate counsel. With the three-year contract, the annual increase would not exceed six percent, and with the five-year contract, it would not exceed four percent. At this time, staff is confident in entering into a five-year contract with Phelps and would recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. The next item will be presented by Tony Lodi, Utilities General Manager, Lingman Construction Incorporated for Project Thirteen Forty-Six, Sanitary Crossing under John Deere Road.
Yes, good evening, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes a construction contract with Lingman Construction in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars to install a sanitary sewer main inside an existing casing that spans under John Deere Road. The casing was installed in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen while John Deere Road was being reconstructed. This sanitary sewer main is of critical importance to the utility and is intended to relieve sanitary sewer overflows. The staff recommends approving this contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Parker.
Hey, Tony, thank you very much for this. I was just wondering, what would the cost have been for doing this had we not had that casing in place? Because I remember that was kind of one of those, you know, throw-ins with what we were doing several years ago, and it just seems like it's probably going to be a lot cheaper by doing this. Just wondering, for everybody's benefit, how much, you know, is this, would this save anything, and if so, roughly how much?
We don't have a number on that. I would say that kudos are due to J.D. He's the one that identified this as a critical need as we analyzed the findings from the sewer collection system study. The casing would have needed to be either directionally drilled or bored in, depending on the geotechnical information provided. But, you know, we were able to dig it in while the road was open, which was much cheaper. So, you know, the directional drilling typically is about five times more expensive.
Thank you. I was thinking it was probably multiples of what we're spending, so that's a great example of spending a little bit upfront and saving a ton down the road. So thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Went.
Thank you, and I appreciate the proactive nature as well. My one question is, though, is the reason that we didn't put this in when it was open at the time, was that because we did some kind of study after two thousand seventeen and discovered that we needed the extra capacity? Or what was the change in the equation that made us decide to pull the trigger now versus back in two thousand seventeen when the whole thing was wide open?
Yeah, two things. One, the findings from that collection system study came in simultaneous to the construction. So if you recall, we actually put that casing in in two pieces. We actually installed two casings. One at this location, it's approximately Fortieth Street, cutting through or heading towards the Walmart property. And then there's an additional casing farther to the east, just east of Forty-first Street. But they were put in in halves as John Deere Road was being constructed in halves. So answer to the question is, you know, really, we didn't have the information needed to design and get permitting, the EPA permitting, for those sewer mains at the time.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tony. Oh, you've got more. Hiring and Promotion. WPC Plant Operator.
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes an exception to the hiring moratorium. We recently promoted a WPC Operations Technician to WPC Plant Operator. The vacant Operations Technician position, we would like to convert to a more versatile plant operator position. So staff is recommending approval of this exception for a WPC Plant Operator.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Potter.
It's only slightly related. I'm wondering why we pulled the item previous to this, the lab people, or the discussion on that.
I'm sorry, I don't follow the question.
That's the next one. That's the next item, the chemist you're talking about?
Yeah, we're on ten.
It's not, no, that was an item that's on the agenda, not on the committee of the whole. It's a completely different item. So that team is referring to our next agenda.
My mistake. Sorry.
Are there any other questions or concerns about item ten, the WPC Plant Operator? Hearing none, roll call please.
I'm sorry, Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Sorry, I distracted by a little background there. Okay, the next item is item number eleven. What, is someone sweeping?
Is it Berg?
It probably is Alderman Berg. Does it sound like birds? Because that's usually what Alderman Berg sounds like. Okay, Hiring and Promotion. Why, you know what? She doesn't even know what she sounds like. Isn't that the saddest thing? She'll never know, because she'll be here with us and won't be making those weird noises. Okay. Hiring and Promotion of the Water Laboratory Chemist, Tony Lodi. Tony, you're on mute.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item is also a resolution that authorizes an exception to the hiring moratorium to fill the Water Laboratory Chemist position. We recently promoted the Lab Chemist to Water Plant Manager, and we would like to move forward with the recruitment and hiring of Laboratory Chemist. We, you may end up, if you approve this, seeing this on the job posting board as Water Lab Manager, if we can work that out with HR Department. Staff recommends approving this item.
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Your Honor.
The next item will be presented by Brandon. It is the Hiring and Promotion of Motor Equipment Operator Vacancies. Brandon Pennell, Municipal Services Operations Manager.
Good evening. I'm here to, oh, looking to for approval of position to Motor Equipment Operators.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Brandon. The next item will be presented by Marty Vonix. It's the Hiring and Promotion of a Director of Utilities.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. I would like to present to you the Hiring and Promotion of Tony Lodi to Director of Utilities. And Tony is going to be, is already the manager of that department, but we're going to elevate him to Director and separate it from the Public Works. So staff recommends approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went.
I just want to speak in favor of this. Tony is a wonderful asset for the City of Moline and has done a great job. He's very responsive to questions, helping the residents on a continuous basis, and has, since he's taken over this role overseeing the whole area, it's been wonderful. And I really think that having him in the room as a director will move those departments forward, increase communications across departments, and allow for better communication and understanding between the utilities and what's going on with the other divisions through Tony working with, as we'll be voting shortly, with Joe Kuhlmannbach at the director level. So I am absolutely in favor of this, and will be voting for it.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Congratulations, Tony. The next item will also be presented by Marty. It is the Hiring and Promotion of an Interim Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. And City Council, I'd like to present to you Joe Kuhlmannbach as the interim Director of Public Works with J.D. Schulte's retirement starting Friday. We believe that Joe Kuhlmannbach, who has been before you many times, will make an excellent interim Director of Public Works at approval.
Move to approve. Second.
I'm sorry, I might have missed those motions. Was it Alderman Went that made the motion?
Schoemaker.
Schoemaker. Alderman Schoemaker made the motion. We had a second of Alderman Went. Okay. Is there any discussion or, Alderman Went?
I want to speak in favor of Joe as well. He's been great. I've been, Alderman Moyer and I have been working pretty closely with him in the Engineering Department on some complete streets and CIP stuff, and Joe is terrific, responsive, great communication, and really looking forward to him taking on the reins, and I see great things for the Public Works Department under his leadership.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Walton?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight eyes, no nays?
That motion carries. Congratulations, Joe. Thank you.
I just want to mention both of those are effective March 22nd.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
The next item will be presented by Dirk Price. Item 15, it is an other. It is the food license renewal fees.
Actually. Actually Marty's presented, because we worked it out.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Marty.
That's why I'm still standing here.
No, okay.
So last week, we heard from a local shop owner regarding the cost of food licenses. And we believed as we analyzed it that our licenses are very, are reasonable, but only reasonable during a reasonable economy. And so, as you know, we've not had one for this past year due to COVID, and so many small businesses have been hurt. So just real quickly, a breakdown, and I want to thank Carol Barnes for this. We have approximately 382 food licenses, broken down by food retail, food service, mobile food, and seasonal stand. And all those generate about $107,210 in revenue. And that is a large part which offsets our cost of a environmental health inspector. So, last March 24th, as we entered into COVID land, council passed a resolution 1037-2020, which indicated what practices and procedures we would follow during the duration of the state of emergency declared by Governor Pritzker. That state of emergency is still in effect. And so, it says that the due date for payment of food licenses is extended for 30 days after the state of emergency period ends. Thereafter, said fees may be paid at 25% of the license fee and due each month for the next four consecutive months. So our, our presenter, our, our shop owner that's here last week is not required to pay that food license right now, only after 30 days after the end of that declaration of emergency. So bottom line, anyone who can pay doesn't have to pay right now until 30 days after that state of emergency is lifted. So we'll be communicating to all our businesses that, that information so that they know. Any questions?
Alderman Moyer?
Thank you. But a letter was sent out, an invoice actually was sent out. You're going to send out clarification?
We still are to invoice them, but they do not have to pay.
Right.
Will they get a, a modified notice so that they know they don't?
Yeah, we're going to send a communication out to them indicating what, what's available to them.
So just for my own clarity, it's not a reduction in fee, it's a deferral of fee?
Right.
So do you, are you looking for a motion from us?
I'm sorry?
Are you looking for a motion?
I don't think so, no, I think we're.
Any concerns by the council? Alderman Went?
So I, I want to make sure I understand. So, so last year, because this has now gone over a year, that we had a number of people who paid for food license when, because they got the invoice, didn't realize that they didn't have to pay it until 30 days after the, the, this, state of emergency was, was declared. So they, they paid it, basically didn't use, or some of them didn't use much of that food license at all for the 2020. But now are getting another one, and again, they could defer, while others could have, maybe have never paid through this whole process. And now they, they're, they've got a second license that they're not paying for until 30 days after. I just want to make sure I understand the, the field of what's, what's going on.
Yeah, so Alderman Went, the, the food license, licensees are a broad spectrum. So you have some that never closed and actually had record profit years. Those are some of the grocery stores, some of the liquor stores. So those folks, of course, were able to pay. This was set up, the relief you all provided, it started with the mayor's emergency order, and then council adopted it in the resolution, was designed for those who were in need to have some relief. But not everybody was equal. We, we also treated, as you'll recall, the restaurants differently. The, the fast foods with drive-throughs who had record years weren't eligible for our restaurant relief programs, and they weren't eligible for this kind of relief from this food service license fee either. But for the people who needed relief, we had two programs in place. One, they could defer their payment with quarterly payments. And for those who were closed by order of the government, I may not be looking the right way, but for those who were closed by order of the government, they were allowed to present to us and ask for a probated amount on their license. And we haven't gotten many of those. We've done other things with the restaurants that were closed from time to time. And some restaurants, you know, fully closed, I think of River House, and then others that stayed open to do, you know, and shifted to doing the carryout. And we came up with the, you know, the mayor came up with the program to buy the compliance services from them for those payments, and the council adopted that program. So all of that combined, that's why it's, it, it's not a bright line rule. It's relief for those who need it, and for those who are not needing it. The city goes on.
Alderman Went?
Is there a way to parse that? Because I don't disagree with you. I mean, you know, like you said, fast food places, the, the grocery stores, that, that totally makes sense, they were record years. But we, we clearly did have a, a lower number of these, you know, bars and restaurants that had a, a really difficult time just surviving, getting through 2020. And, and still, especially in Illinois, are limited in capacity in what they can do and, and those sorts of things. I, I know at, at the front of this, we said that there was $100,000 worth of income that we're, we're talking about. But if we parse and take out all of those that I think we all would agree did a great year and weren't in dire straits, if we shrunk that down to that, that set of groups that we recognize had a, a difficult year, how much money are we talking about if we didn't collect from those small restaurant group bars? Because I, and, and one of the reasons I asked is, I talked with a, a bar owner today, and he has a food license where he pays $400 a year. And basically, what he said was, it's an ice license. All he gives out is like beef sticks and cheese sticks, but because he has an ice machine, he has to have a $400 food license. And so, I, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand. I, I don't want to give relief to those ones that are doing amazing, but I sure as heck want to help out those ones that are struggling.
Well, I would object to your question if we were in court because it was a run-on and compound of about six questions. The amount of cost question you raised, Marty?
Yeah, so it's from our list, which we can't determine like whether someone's just selling ice and cheese sticks versus a full kitchen. But we have food service licenses. There's two, that's the largest one, there's 268 of them. Food retail license, those would be your grocery stores, gas stations, those kind of things, which are 73 of those. And they make up about $100,000 right there, those two. After that, you have mobile food, you know, food trucks and that kind of thing, and seasonal, and that's only like $3,400. So.
And, and it's, it's odd because Katie's, Mr. Bodenbender who is here, he's got two licenses, so he's in for $550. And, and so everybody who's needed relief, and, and the restaurants have talked to the mayor or certain members of council, and you've directed them our way to staff, we found ways to work with them, try and give them some relief about whether it's license fees or enforcement fees or other things we're doing with them. And the next round of funding, once we get the details, we have ideas already to present to you about how we, I think as the mayor called it, you know, extend the runway for these folks to get back to normal in terms of food service and all the rest. But anybody who's reached out in any way to seek relief, we found a way to help them. The problem is, you know, you just don't know who to identify. I mean, Mr. Bodenbender, you know, there, there's some, you know, bit of a character according to the lore I've learned in the last week since he appeared, like paying for his fee in all coins because, you know, he was ejected. So, anybody who's needed help, we've tried to find them help. Alderman Went, that's, that was council's directive to staff, and that's what we've done, and that's what we continue to do. So anybody who needs some help on their runway, we're here to try and make that happen.
Alderman Went?
Thank you. And, and I appreciate that, and, and I'll reach out to as many as, and maybe through our forward program.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that instead of waiting for someone to solicit us, because I, I think that when an organization, I can speak for my own, when you're quite stressed, you don't really have the bandwidth to go looking around. You're just stressed. And so, anything that we can do to help facilitate that message out to the entire business community, I think is a good thing. Alderman Went?
And then the last thing is, I, I'd like to, to make a motion to direct staff to come back to us with a proposal of a different license between somebody who has a full kitchen and somebody who is just doing ice. I mean, clearly, oh, I'll, I'll just make that motion, and then I'll make my argument.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Moyer to differentiate between, what license is that?
Yeah, to differentiate between classes of food service.
Thank you, okay. Classes of food service. Alderman Went?
Yeah, and, and to that, and, and I recognize that we have inspections, and even if it's an inspector going in and inspecting a ice machine, there are some costs associated with it. But that clearly shouldn't be the same cost as someone who has a full kitchen and have to have an inspection for that. So to Marty's point where we don't know the difference between a beef stick and a, and a ice machine versus somebody who's got a full kitchen, I, I'd like to see something where maybe we have a differentiation at the, the city level, and maybe they're not paying as much as somebody who's got a full kitchen.
Any other discussion on that item? Roll call please.
Who was the second, was it Alderman Moyer?
Alderman Moyer.
Got it.
Roll call.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Walton?
Nay.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Seven eyes, one nay?
That motion carries, and then I'd like to add a night two cents. If we're going to differentiate, I want to make sure that it's a subtle differentiation because I don't want to discourage someone from expanding their business because the license is more expensive, so.
Well, that's an excellent point, Mary. And I would say that the, thanks to the fire marshal, it's going to be easier to write this as code because the inspections done through the electronic inspection, that's going to take the burden off of our environmental health inspector in some ways. And so, the cost recovery component of this just got a lot easier, and we tend to make it a more subtle.
Thank you.
I do want to mention that in staff discussions today, we did come up with the idea that if each of us went out and bought three pounds of bratwurst from Katie's, that he probably would be able to cover his costs.
He probably would. That's a lot of bratwurst. Way to take one for the team. Didn't we have a motion on the floor other than that?
No, you passed it, then.
Oh, okay. That was the second motion. Fantastic. Okay, that's our other this evening. It was fun. It was fun. Okay, we have an informational by Brandon this evening. It's the Spring Yard Waste Collection waiver of sticker requirement. I wonder if that was yours.
All right, the last two years, we waived the first two weeks of leaf collection for the residents, and we're here for direction on if we're waiving it again this year.
Alderman Potter?
What, what weeks did we do this? Do you remember?
It, it's the first two weeks. So this year, I believe it starts March 31st. It's the first full week in April. So it's the first two weeks in April.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Williams. Oh, everybody's got their hands up. This one's controversial, I didn't expect that. Alderman Moyer?
I did, thank you. I just had a quick question. I was looking at the, the cost breakdown, and I, one thing that's not on there, I assume that if we're, if we're not charging for the fees and people are using it, if we charge, maybe people would choose not to do anything, or they would choose maybe to put it in a ravine or to send it up in storm sewers. Do we, I, I guess I'm just curious, what's the cost to the city of cleaning? Do we have to sometimes do that? Do we have to sometimes clean out storm sewers or ravines or just impact it down the waterway in any way or?
Yeah, um, the, there's a utility stormwater. They, they chart that kind of stuff more often with contractors. But like, if we get all the plugs, storm sewer, we will go take care of it. But yeah, they're, we, we don't chart it, what the cost would be.
No, I'm just thinking that the waiving of this probably saves us money, you know, down the road, in, in terms of cleaning storm sewers. Thank you.
Alderman Waldron?
The rationale the last couple of years that was presented to us to waive these fees was that the leaf collection went long, or we had an early winter, and we didn't, weren't able to collect all the leaves. And we weren't able to collect all the yard waste from the homes. So the rationale was, the last two years, is that we needed these two weeks to let these people do the spring clean because we didn't get them all in the fall. Now, I happen to have a distinct memory of Rod Schick coming to the podium and saying, "We've never had a better year for cleanup leaves than this one." Not only did we get them all, we completed them all. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I don't understand where the impetus is to do it this year. Yes, Alderman Moyer points out that they could wind up in the ravines. They're going to wind up in the ravines anyway if it's easier for customers. I don't think that's an issue. Nothing's changed ravine-wise or catch basin-wise at all. And I, as usual, would not be for waiving the fee.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Brandon.
Yes.
So the fee per bag is what?
$2.
And have you ever done a calculation on what the true cost is per bag? Like the variable cost?
Yeah, the last two years, we kept track.
Yeah.
And when Rob figured this, I believe he did an estimate between the last two years of we kept, and it was like $10,000 in lost revenue for not collecting $2.
Well, I agree with the lost revenue, but what I'm thinking about is what is our true cost of going out and retrieving, you know, 100 bags in a day? What, what is the actual cost of it? Because I'm curious if even the $2 covers the cost of pulling a bag. Do you know what I mean? I understand that it's rub.
Yeah, the wages, the vehicle, and all that.
Yeah, is it, is it an accurate, you know, fee for the bag?
When, when the $2 was set up, it was based on an average of what the employee, the truck, and what we get per day was. But to answer your question on that, we, we don't have that right now. Why? I can tell you what the cost is.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. It is complicated because you do have the benefit of other things, like people have nicer yards, and you don't have it in the storm sewer. But I'm just curious how much it actually costs us to pick up a bag and whether or not the $2 is the accurate amount. Alderman Waldron knows.
Just a follow-up for Brandon's sake. Years ago, we did do that, and the amount, I don't remember what it is, but I'm sure it was over the $2.
Was it? So it's a little bit, so it just subsidizes the service?
Correct, but putting it to the actual, let's say it was $350, was politically not comfortable for folks, so they subsidized it and lifted it to.
I see. Thank you, Alderman Waldron. Oh, Dirk's got something to say.
Yeah, I was going to say, so among my subspecialties with municipalities is the pollution control waste stream. There is no more expensive component of the municipal waste stream than landscape and leaves. If you ask for leaf pickup when you contract out, I mean, I know we do it in-house, but it is always the most expensive component for every proposal. It's way above $2 a bag to handle. Now, we're going to be closer to $2 a bag in Moline because we've got it in-house and we're able to control those costs in a different way than a contractor is. But historically, with all the literature, like the kind we studied for snow plowing and now about leaf removal, that is the probably most expensive component, and it is without a doubt subsidized for the sake of the residents. That's what council's job is.
Is that, is one of our advantages that we don't have the tipping fee? Because we can put it on our farm? We do spring in the farm, don't we?
And that is a huge advantage. The disposal of landscape waste has to go to either a compost facility or a landscape landfill unless you have your own. And essentially, we have our own compost farms where we're allowed to do it by themselves.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Do we have a location if a citizen wanted to just throw the bags in the back of his truck and drive it somewhere? Do we have the means to collect that from the citizens?
No, no, we do not.
Hmm. Brandon, I have another question for you. This is unrelated. Our mulch, do we still have mulch available for community? Is that on the website and stuff? I haven't really looked.
It was on a Facebook page.
Are you both picking it up?
They did a news release, I heard on the radio. We, we have it up in Stevens Park still and Riverside.
Are we going to help load trucks at all this spring, or are we just living it to them?
Um, we, we'll help load, but we haven't had that request yet. We, we helped in the fall. We, we loaded some, some ice in the fall.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, any other discussion on this particular item? I, I believe that the motion is to waive the fees for two weeks. Roll call please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoemaker?
Aye.
Walton?
Nay.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker? Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay?
That motion carries. Thank you so much, Brandon. I'd now like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council this evening? Did anybody?
No.
Without any public comment or is there any further business for the committee of the whole? Hearing none, we're going to close out of the committee of the whole and go into our council agenda. There will be no invocation this evening. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
President.
Parker?
President.
Went?
President.
Potter?
President.
Moyer?
President.
Schoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of March 9th, 2021, and appointments made during committee of the whole on March 16th, 2021. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3003-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter 20, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances by amending Section 20-5201, Establishment of Snow Routes, Section 20-5202, Notice When Parking Along Snow Routes is Restricted, Section 20-5203, Removal of Vehicles Parked in Violation of This Division, and Section 20-51191A, Penalties for Violations of This Article. Council Bill 4003-2021, a special ordinance providing for the financing by the City of Moline, Illinois for the Water Main and Tiff Number 7 Airport Business Park by authorizing issuance of $299,379 in a revenue anticipation note and purchase of the same by the Water Fund of the City of Moline, Illinois, appropriating monies for said purposes and authorizing execution of any related documents. Council Bill 4004-2021, a special ordinance providing for the financing by the City of Moline, Illinois for the sewer main in the Tiff Number 7 Airport Business Park by authorizing issuance of $367,173 in a revenue anticipation note and purchase of the same by the Water Pollution Control Fund of the City of Moline, Illinois, appropriating monies for said purposes and authorizing execution of any related documents. Resolutions. Council Bill 1062-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Denler Incorporated for Project Number 1349, 2021 Joint and Crack Sealing Program for an amount not to exceed $75,000 at the proposed unit prices. Council Bill 1063-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Five Cities Construction Company for Project Number 1350, Sixth Street Reconstruction, Fourth Avenue to Railroad Avenue for an amount of $105,556. Council Bill 1064-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement with Earthworks Design Incorporated for the John Deere Pavilion Tree Pit Landscaping Project for an amount of $19,245. Council Bill 1065-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an intergovernmental agreement for improvements to the MetroLink John Deere Commons Passenger Ferryboat Terminal with the Rockland County Metropolitan Mass Transit District MetroLink. Council Bill 1066-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a temporary construction easement to allow additional improvements to the dock facility at the MetroLink John Deere Commons Passenger Ferryboat Terminal in the vicinity of 1425 River Drive, Moline, Illinois.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Parker.
Second, my honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1067-2021, a resolution authorizing exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to Resolution 1051-2020 to promote Tony Lodi to Director of Utilities.
Motion approved, 1067-2021, Parker.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1068-2021, a resolution approving the appointment of Joe Kuhl and Beck, Building Official, as interim Director of Public Works for the City of Moline, Illinois, effective March 22nd, 2021, and approving a 10% increase to his current salary effective March 22nd, 2021, for the term he serves as interim Director of Public Works.
Motion approved, 1068-2021, Parker.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
And that is all we have this evening, your honor.
Thank you so much, Brandon.
Thank you.
So, we'll go through our miscellaneous business like we do every week. Alderman Williams?
Nothing, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Yeah, I want to take this opportunity, this was one of the cooler meetings where we did a bunch of promotions for fire and filled some vacant spots, kind of making me feel like we're getting a little bit back to normal. So, congratulations to everybody that got promotions, they're well deserved and looking forward to getting back to full strength. Have a good one.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Went.
Ditto on that and I also want to thank our first responders, our firefighters and our police and, and the officers that were injured this week and their heroin rescue as they went through and help our citizens. You know, it's just always a reminder of them running towards danger and helping our residents and I couldn't, I can't thank them enough. So, thank you all and I hope everyone is feeling better and healthy coming out of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Went. Alderman Potter?
Yes, your honor, I just want to wish JD, who's retiring at the end of the week, happy retirement and very happy that this is a great story of someone who came from, from near the bottom and rose to near the top, in fact, was the top person as an interim on more than a couple of occasions and served the city well and I wish him the best in retirement. I'd like to think that I was his favorite alderman, but there's a joke and I'm not his favorite alderman. But that, nothing further, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Moyer?
Yes, thank you. I just need to publicly say thank you to Brad Homan who, it seems like a week doesn't go by where I'm not leaning on him for something and only to find out that he's already months ahead of me on the issue. And I just wanted to reach out and, and I should also say, since this will be the last chance to do it, Chris is still on here or not, good luck at his new position and I really appreciate all the help he's given me over the last two years.
Thank you, Alderman Went. Alderman Waldron?
Thank you, your honor, I just.
Oh, sorry, it doesn't, Schoonmaker. Sorry, Alderman Schoonmaker, I can't be out of order, it makes me feel like.
You know, I was already feeling bad because when you're in the sixth seat, everybody above you, in front of you has already said all the things that I was going to say. So, then you hurt my feelings and let him go in front of me.
Sorry, sorry.
I, Alderman Waldron, would you back me on this and Alderman Berg? At the, at the next few meetings, we need to start in reverse order?
I, I will.
So, we get to say something and add something?
Absolutely. Really, I'm kind of a creature of habit, so I'm going to have to mull that over.
We may have to make a motion and vote on this. Thank you. I echo the previous council comments. Well done.
Thank you, Alderman Schoonmaker. Alderman Waldron?
Wanted to echo Alderman Potter's on JD. He was a key member of my staff for 15 years, my division manager and fleet superior employee and he will be greatly missed. That's all, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron. Alderman Berg?
Ditto to that as well. I know that I am JD's favorite alderman, so just so you know that, Alderman Potter. And we're really going to miss him and good luck and I'm sure Cheryl's going to enjoy having him at home and spending some, a lot of time with his grandchildren because I know that's his biggest joy. Second, I just wanted to check with you, Marty. I read something in the paper that said that one of our employees did not get an, did not get called for an interview for the economic development position. I just want to clarify that. Have you started interviewing for that or no?
No, I think you're referring to Chris Mathias. No, we haven't started interviewing for that.
Okay, okay.
So, it's not that he didn't get an interview, it's just that we had not started.
Okay, so he wasn't called for an interview because we haven't started interviewing?
Yeah, the paper had it wrong.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Imagine that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Marty, for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
I was asked, so I just wanted to make sure I had the information correct.
Thank you, Alderman Berg.
Sure.
And, you know, the same, along the same vein, I think it's, you know, it's, it's an important time for this city and I'm, I want to express my gratitude to everybody has, that has laid such a strong foundation for all of these new people coming into these new positions. It's an exciting time and, and they're picking up a legacy that I think is strong and we're moving into a place that's a very good place. And they also want to talk about our officers that, you know, went above and, well, you know, no, that's, that's why they're here. But they exposed themselves to great risk to do their job to protect the rest of us. And I had the opportunity to talk to the three officers that didn't have to, didn't have the severe injury that they had to spend the night in hospital, but I did talk to them and I just wanted to, to specifically name them. It was Sergeant Colson, Officer McManus and Officer Compton. I had the opportunity to talk to and, and these three demonstrated such grace and it was almost casual for them. They, they gave me the impression that it was all in a day's work and they were tired when I talked to them, they had had a long day. And it was just extraordinary of, you know, just how people like that, that are raised up and, and live a life of service to the rest of us, how casually they do it. And I just wanted to express my gratitude and, and then my warmest regards for Officer Prementer. I hope that he is doing well. I haven't had the opportunity to speak to him directly, but I hope that he is feeling well. He is a hero and the community, on behalf of the community, I'd like to say thank you to all of them. And then I'd also like to say thank you to all the other officers and firefighters and, and all of the other ones that serve our community that are willing to do that for us every day. So, thank you.[1634.02]